Twenty-eight-year-old girls.
Yeah.
Buckle up.
It's been a little bumpy from five to ten.
Yeah, that's all that we get.
Yeah.
So he said, "Oh, well." I don't think he was remembering the first conversation. Because there was some pushback on it. And we, we had, we were friends for three minutes to do a certain section. And didn't want to do anything. Yeah, and there was no reason why.
Good evening, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
I believe that, but I don't know.
I'm not certain if you remember that conversation. So. I just try to keep going the way I wrote it, which is that I have a top section. And I'm just like, uh, I'm just putting a lot of pressure on the person. So. I'm spread out.
Yeah, I just hope you just don't. I mean, you're not bored with.
I agree with you. Yeah, it's all we need to keep them. See. I think we've got to work on keep pushing. Yeah, it's all we need to keep them. I guess the point was, you know, the guy was just building, I suppose, a spoil it. I think that's what I'm trying to do. I always think it's, I had. I was on purpose, so they're, they're like, yo. Four years, you have to be on the gas. So these ones got through it. I'm just gonna get a hold of that guy. You can, I push up here. I think we cut up, you use your truck, I thought. I guess the point was, you know, there's a pregnant guy was just built, I said, don't spoil it. I think that's, if I understand, maybe other things from when you're, you got it here. The last conversation I had with him, he thought we could do it under permit. So he said, "Oh, well." I don't think he was remembering the first conversation. Because there was some pushback on it. And we, we had, we were friends for three minutes to do a certain section. And didn't want us doing anything bad. Yeah, and there was a good reason why.
Good evening, Chris.
I believe that, but I don't know. I'm uncertain, maybe you remember that conversation. So. I just try to keep going the way I wrote it, which is that I have a top section. And I'm just like, uh, I'm just putting a lot of pressure on the person. Straight out of the. I'm straight out of the. I mean, you're not bored with. I agree with you. But you gotta work on keep pushing. Yeah, it's all we need to keep them. I'm just like, uh, I'm just like, I pull them, just go on that. I go over to the, uh, before you do this, that's better. I'll do that. I give it to you. All right. Is there any bad press? No, I'm good. But it's time to control. How about yourself?
Pretty good, true.
Yes. I don't need you. Sure. But I got it. I'm trying to try to, something I can control. This is first. I mean, it's. All right, then? Oh, gee. I'm just gonna. It's. It's. Yeah. 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 Oh.
Okay. Uh. Yeah. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public participation. Mr. Sandberg, you signed in here, you have, this is where we have public comment, if you have any comment, if not, you can speak, if not.
Well, the reason I came was because of the meeting last week at Grange. Uh, it was very informative, I really enjoyed it. I was unaware of the financial gap that is needed and the low amount of officers that we have given a job for all these townships. Um, and you mentioned that Richmond Township is getting ready to put together its budget.
Correct.
When is that due?
Um, we usually work at that probably the end of this month, well, it's September. First week of October, we have a final by the end of October. And then, uh, have it for public comment. So it's, it's now, it's now. And we will discuss the police budget tonight. It's on the agenda.
Well, the reason I came was I, at the meeting, there were several people offering suggestions on how to get the public involved sooner. And I thought about this, and November eighth, we have the midterm elections here. But after that person steps out the door, they're voting to vote with us. And I thought that if the township could put together a flyer stating the importance of this issue that we have, and give it to our residents, and get some feedback immediately, that that might help you make your decision, unless it's already a domain.
Well, we'll discuss it tonight, that's probably a little late. Um, one of the things we're gonna do, and we'll, we'll discuss that tonight also, we talked about website, Facebook page, something to get a little bit more information quicker out to the residents. Because you see, we have thirty-four hundred residents, and this is our typical attendance. So it's, it's, and, and I understand that, not everybody wants to come sit through these meetings, but we are very transparent, we try and be transparent, but we probably lacking distribution of information. So we have proposals here for new websites that a county's not gonna host anymore. And I have some ideas about maybe a Facebook page that comes with some challenges of managing that too, but we'll discuss that tonight. And, uh, and we'll talk about the police budget.
Yeah, but that, you know, that was one of the things like a quick fix. I thought would be, get it, you know, get some input, but yeah, if you have to do this by October, like, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah.
The other question was, you made it, and this is ballpark, we're not saying it's exactly forty-four dollars. But that figure that you, in the ballpark, is that per household?
Per person. Per person. I don't know, uh, truthfully, I don't know how many households there are. I only, I mean, I might could get that, but I only know that there's residents is roughly thirty-four hundred residents. So.
And I was talking to one of my neighbors today, and, uh, this comment was, is this amount totally committed to Fleetwood Police Department? The one, what is it, ten thousand or a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, the increase is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that committed ballpark, true to that?
Yeah, well, that would be what we discussed. You know, we currently have a contract, we just purchased service from Fleetwood. So the increase would be include a hundred and fifty to Fleetwood for more contracted service. They would apply that to getting more officers, that's what they, that's what they wanna, that's what they're asking for. Jump, that goes to Fleetwood.
Yeah, I'm, I'm finished. I just, I just thought it would be a good way.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Um, we're gonna try, we're gonna try and get a better handle on the website and maybe your Facebook page, we'll discuss that later tonight, that's just my idea. You know, we have, we have codes here for websites, we talked about that at the last meeting, because the county's no longer gonna host, so we have a couple options, and we're gonna decide on something, I would think, tonight. But, um, we're gonna work a little harder on getting better information to the public. A lot of municipalities have a newsletter they send out, which is a little more costly, but I think in this era, I think Facebook and website might be a little bit better, having it.
There is another way, we'll talk about it when I get to the, or when we get to your, your.
All right. And thanks for coming, we could see firsthand now.
Well, I've been here before, but not every time.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
This, this just caught my attention. And it caught the attention of twenty people, I guess.
Yeah, fair.
Should've been more, but.
Should've been more.
Caught the attention more.
Yeah, I thought it should've, maybe didn't advertise properly or, or, you know, but I, I would've thought it caught, would've caught more attention, but, um, there was a lot of positive feedback that was at the meeting. So, I, I was, I was, I thought it was a good meeting. So, anyone else?
Can I make a comment? I, I did not sign it.
That's all right, go ahead, what's your name?
My name's Glenn Dwyer. I live at, uh, four seventy-three Hill Road, ready to sign and grow it all, Bill. And, uh, I don't come to many meetings because it's a shift issue. I work second shift, uh, out of Gliddon's for thirty-four years. Uh, we've lived in the township for about eight and a half years, so I'm not pretty, did a history here with the police. I came from Lee'sport, where I was a police commissioner for Northern Berks Regional Police, and I represented the, uh, borough of Lee'sport. Uh, so I understand that the date, the, uh, on one side, you know, let's keep the taxes down, but you guys get pressured, everybody, we live in the state of Pennsylvania, right? So property taxes are an issue, I pay ten thousand a year in property taxes on my home. I make fifty thousand, that ten thousand's actual dollars, fifty thousand's gross, might as well, Mr. Pennsylvania, on the same page, it takes. But in the time that we've lived on Eagle Road, and how we've seen the traffic pattern change, and I believe a lot of it is driven from this circle up here. Good idea, keeps the traffic flow moving, I think it was a great idea versus, you need, I didn't even travel that road, because I didn't know what to expect on it, the only basis, part of three would let me. At times I did travel, and it was like, why did I even go here? Okay, because here I'm gonna be late again. But what you see on this road up here is, you see a lot of traffic and people trying to get around this circle and two-twenty-two in general. You know, this is a nice little country road, I can drive home or I can drive to work, and it's a nice little, uh, relaxing drive. Unfortunately, there's a, there's a speed limit sign there that says, I think it's forty or forty-five miles an hour, not sixty or sixty-five or seventy. And that's what we've seen over a period of eight and a half years, so we got to a period where a few of our animals got hit by cars. And I didn't want to see a kid get hit, okay, on bicycles, and a lot of men and night and office kids, and some of the neighbors' kids are out playing in the street. And they shouldn't have to worry about getting run over by somebody doing seventy on that road. So I picked up the phone and I reached out to the, uh, Fleetwood Police Department, first time in eight and a half years. And, uh, had a good conversation, a lot of times, you know, you hear negative feedback, regardless whether it's the police department or who you reach out to. The only time you hear something is negative, okay? So I had a good conversation with the secretary, I think her name is Cindy, and explained the situation, you know, in front of our house and the speeding that takes place, and she put me through to the chief, I had a, uh, he took about, about thirty minutes of his time. And, uh, had a good conversation, explained that the speeding issue, I believe, was safety, uh, related. And he put some officers on the road, and I said, you know, you're welcome to sit in our driveway, if you want, I'll give you permission. He, uh, I think they sat at everybody's driveway in the street parks. And whether or not he's handed out any citations or not, I don't know, I don't know how pretty did that information, but it certainly captured people's attention. You know, the people that work their day shift, their second shift, their third shift, I think that's a lot of, what else drives that traffic, traffic pattern and the speeding that goes hand in hand with that. So I seen a difference, okay, because police presence on that road, like I said, I understand the debate, the tax tower debate, I sat on, I sat at the table for Northern Berks. I sat on the opposite side of the table of Gliddon's, I represented the neighborhood for you. So I came from labor, but sat on the company side, if you wanna call it the company side, in, in the, uh, labor arena. But to me, what's important, and I don't know if, you, you, you gave a number of forty-some dollars ahead? Forty-four, forty-four. By adding another officer, what does that do to that forty-four dollar number? But to me, you don't put a cost on safety, okay? I think you can look at other budget line items, and, and maybe look at layoff somewhere else, but you don't put a cost on safety, right? And, uh, you know, you guys have made a decision, and that's why you're, you're elected. In my opinion, you have the right to make a decision without having the meeting up at, up at a, a Grange, despite what people believe. They all had the option to run for office that you guys sit here, right? Okay, they could went out and got their signatures, put on the ballot, and made a decision on behalf of the township. You guys have that right, you don't have to ask people. Maybe in good faith, you ask people, you actually do have that right to make that decision, because you were elected to make that decision, it's probably in your constitution or your Bible. So, but if I can just give an opinion to reiterate again, I don't think you put a dollar amount on safety. And I'd like to know what the forty-four dollar budget goes to when you add maybe one more officer, or maybe, I don't know if your collective bargaining agreement allows part-time officers, if you terminate it as part-time individuals, full-time. But, uh, I'm just giving my opinion again, I appreciate, uh, appreciate your service, I appreciate the opportunity, you're welcome to speak here.
We appreciate you coming. I think it's, uh, a, a couple points I wanna speak to, um, I think it's a double-edged sword on your road, when we paved it, I think it's great, because the road's smooth, I don't think it helped the speed limit. Unfortunately, I live on Main Creek Road, I call it the two-twenty-two bypass, in the morning and at night at rush hour, it's, it's, it's terrible. It's terrible how, how people fly on that road, and, uh, and safety i- is a huge concern, I think as a board, we're responsible to have good roads. We're responsible for, our main responsibilities are get the snow removed, fire protection, and, and I think police protection. And a- as a board up here, it's always a tough decision, uh, and I was looking through when you were talking, I didn't wanna be disrespectful, but our budget for the police currently is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year, as we sit. It's our largest line item budget, and if you go to Maxantoni or neighboring township, they don't have a police budget, because they rely on state police. And it's always been a contentious item here in the township to have safety, but still manage the costs, because it's a lot of money. And we always try and look at that and, and, and get input. We had the meeting at the Grange, because as a board, you know, we're always tight on, on how we spend our money, or, or conscious of, of what we do, because we have to answer to the residents, and we take that serious. But the presentation that the chief laid out for us opened our eyes to a lot of different things that have happened over the last ten years that have increased costs, just society in general. So we thought it was beneficial to let the residents know what we're faced with in a township, and if we're committed to keeping our police protection, and, and we seen what happens with neighboring townships, um, with response time and stuff, I think it's important to have the police protection, but also an explanation of where the money's going. I think Fleetwood has always done a good job with managing the funds. I mean, you've seen that with, uh, in the presentation, we're one of the lowest per capita for police protection in the county. So that tells me they're doing the best they can with the funds. They've been pretty in the past, and, and to this, up to this point, they've been pretty transparent with what they spend the money on. And we push back, I think, every, every budget, we push back, because it's not an open checkbook. But we appreciate residents coming back and giving, giving their opinion, and it's not all the residents that agree, you know, it's a lot of money. But we try and be conscious and see what's best for the township, and, and I, I say this up here, we do it, try and do it for the right reason, and we have a brave board here, I think. But you don't make a lot of friends doing this job, someone's always unhappy with a decision, but we've, I think, in the last eight years of it here, I think eight years, nine years, I'm not even sure, we try to do what's best for the township, even if it might not be the most popular, so we try and keep that in, in mind, but we really need resident feedback, you know, and, uh, just like your, your interaction with the police department, I had the same interaction with the police department, I had an incident a month ago, two months ago, I called, I get immediate response, not because they know it's me. I don't even know that they know it's me, but I, I, I had an issue in my township, in my, in my neighborhood that I wanted addressed. Eight minutes, they were there. Fifteen minutes later, they caught the people doing stuff that they shouldn't have been doing. And, uh, that's, that's a value as a resident here, and when we look at the big picture, our millage just think is three and a half overall, and that includes the fire millage. The school gets twenty-nine mills, you know, so what we get for our, our millage here, and what we get out of it, I think local government is the best bang for the buck, for what we do, and we try and, and be conscious, and we'll discuss the police, the police presence, um, and the police budget here in a little bit, so we appreciate the comment.
Tell you where the Berks was, eight, eight years ago, when I represented Lee'sport, two-point-one million dollars. That's three municipalities, Lee'sport, one-on-one, Main Creek, fourteen officers, one secretary, which was Ruth at the time, Scott Egan. Two-point-one million, eight years ago. Lee'sport share that, it's three hundred and some thousand dollars, ninety-one hours of patrol time per week. Ninety-one. Think about that. Okay, now you got your wage, and you got your loaded wage, and your benefits, your negotiated benefits, just like you guys do here. But for ninety-one hours, it was three hundred and some thousand dollars.
Right. So that's probably what ours was with full-time coverage at that time. So now it has increased with inflation and just regular stuff, but we, we wanna be transparent and let people know where the money goes, and that's, it was a very good presentation, I thought, the chief did a great job explaining things, where the money's going, where the time. I mean, in society, what we live in today, it just costs so much more time and effort to get the same amount of job done, so we appreciate you coming out.
Sure, I came here to thank these guys, uh, you know, I was hoping to catch the chief, I'd never met him before, the, you know, felt very professional. So just to convey that also.
Yeah.
And the secretary.
Well, thanks for coming out. All right, you guys have anything? Go. Um, approval of the minutes for August eighth's monthly meeting.
I looked over, I thought they were.
Nice, looks good to me.
I'll make a motion, you approve.
Hall of favor. Enforcement report. Um, I had words with, uh, with Jeff Fein today.
No, I thought that was gonna say, I think Jeff says, reached out to you.
Yeah, I had some, uh, words with Jeff Fein today on, uh, some issues we still have over on Line Road. Uh, we cited that property for all the vehicles there that are on the property and not licensed.
Three-thirty mine.
Three-thirty mine. They're still there, just moved in a different location. His recommendation was, uh, no notice of violation, now just a citation. He was already cited to clean it up and didn't, and he thinks just move to the next step again. So I said, we discuss it and, and let you know, um. I think we just do another citation, you know, I mean, we gotta get it cleaned up, and it doesn't seem like any progress has been made, we have another neighbor complaint.
Taylor, give me thirty minutes, let me try and handle it before we go, real life, because I know the guy. Maybe I can talk some common sense into him. He's gonna lose.
He's gonna lose.
So why put it on?
Right.
Let me give it one more.
I'm okay with that, I just wanted to bring it up, but I, I don't wanna keep kicking this can down the road, most of the time, if you're on, when it's, he's not making an effort. Um, my other discussion with him, we had a complaint, um, across from the solar farm. There's a property that has sideline businesses, that we had a complaint that they don't think it's zoned for that. And he was gonna check into that next week, and make sure it's a, it's a business that's selling crafts, a couple lines a year, arts and crafts. It's not zoned for that, I don't think, he is just gonna follow up next week and report back to us. What the status is.
I've had that complaint two or three times.
Right, and, uh, I think he kicked that down the road a little bit too, but we make everybody jump through hoops to follow the rules, and I would just make sure everybody's following the rules, so that was another conversation with that, I had, um, on that. Besides that, I didn't see anything pressing in the report.
They mowing at the solar farm, I know that was.
Yeah, they did, I think, did that.
They did.
Well, I went by.
They're bailing us.
Huh?
They're bailing, they have a half of it bailed.
Did they mow it all though?
I don't like they do, hey.
Yeah.
It's only half. I just passed that on my way home from birthday.
I was wondering.
I talked to Steve at the beginning of the week. I told him he's got to get off it now and he said they were gonna do it that week.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right.
Hope they don't put that in a, in a bar anywhere in others' way.
No, that's gotta go to Bushroom.
Yeah, it's most of the wheat.
That's half pickles. That's what the biggest concern was.
Yeah. And that was a valid concern.
Yeah.
So anything else on the report that you've seen pressing?
No, actually, no.
Did I make a motion when you accepted the report?
No, second.
Hall of favor. S E O report seems pretty slum. Don't see anything there pressing.
I see that.
That's just one page.
Yep, pretty slum.
I make a motion when you accept it.
Oh, second.
Hall of favor. Report from the police chief, I don't know if he's, do you know if he's coming tonight?
No, he won't. No, he wore him out last week, so. He's on vacation.
Oh, that's right, he did say. Do you have anything that you want to add?
No, you told me everything was pretty much covered at the meeting, so if somebody has any questions, we're, we're.
That would have been the report for this month.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity as always.
Moving over to Speedway now.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Yeah. I make a motion when you accept that.
Oh, second.
Hall of favor. Virginville Fire Company report. I was here from the Fire Company in Virginville. I don't have any questions. Walnut Town Fire Company, do you have anything to add, Jeff?
No, just been, it was a busy month last month. Not all well.
I see automatic fire, we talked about that a while, but do you have any repeats, any issues?
Basically, with, basically with the whole people burning food. That's just silly. It is, it is, you know?
Did you, did you have the one, oh, did you get a call on Richmond Road or was that Virginville the other morning? Four AM? I heard the sirens go.
Yeah, I think that was, that was good for that.
Did you? That was nothing? Was that just a false call?
Yeah.
All right. Discuss invoices received for professional services at two-fifty-five Caler Road. I think that was on the agenda last month, Chris. Can you update us on that or?
Well, how do you want to proceed? I haven't heard anything lately about the gentleman proceeding. We have put, put it out to him that, you know, he needs to initiate the process, hire a professional. I, I think his expectation was somehow we would just sort of hand it to him as a finished project and I think that wasn't our intention, especially it's not in our township, you know? So, you know, just look at what we have here in terms of time that I spent. Looks like about three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars worth of services in this packet and Scott on here, I don't know, do you? I can't believe he didn't have more than this.
That was, that was all he actually wrote us for so far.
Hundred-seventy-six, point-two-five, so have a little under five-hundred dollars worth of professional services that have been charged to township by my office and by Stetson. So it would be easier to get this paid if the property owner would follow through with his request and start asking for permits and submit designs for review and that kind of thing. But if he doesn't do any of those things, do you want us to send him a letter and ask him to pay for these things?
Yeah, one of my suggestions. Reach out, see where he's at in the process.
Yeah, just kind of give him, ask him where he isn't exactly, where he is in the process. And, I mean, I gotta believe that there is a long-term return to him that will be positive if he follows up. He seems to be going that direction regardless of what.
What's costing him to pump out right now.
Right, so, but it's a, there's a, there's a significant upfront cost. He still has to pay for the pumping in the meantime, so, you know, he has to.
We don't know, maybe he has something to do with the design work as well.
Well, that's true.
We don't know.
Just from Chavjen and see where he's at with the process and we'll just put one poll for him.
Okay.
Softy Creek Brewing's gonna do Maple Misters again. I see they have a, a insurance certificate and the map. It's very minimal in Richmond Township.
Yes.
So we've never had issues in the past. I don't have an issue.
No, I don't make a motion for it. Second.
Hall of favor.
Did they provide insurance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, discuss the police budget. We had a meeting last week in Fleetwood at the Grange, public meeting. The police coverage, the police force is strained on amount of officers for our township in Fleetwood Borough. Their request originally was two full-time officers. We had thought maybe one full-time for now would be more in order. That with the cost, I think the cost is roughly one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for one full-time. Since that discussion, they have the ability to hire a part-time guy thirty-five hours a week, so it'd almost be like two guys, but the cost for a part-time employee is a lot less than a full-time. So there's a lot of bang for the buck. The total cost, I think, to the township to add this, to add this full-time and part-time would be around a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
What was the, what was the budget number?
Five, five.
Five forty-five.
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight.
Yeah. Five thirty-eight.
Fifty, ten percent.
But now that does not include, I'm sure there's gonna be a cost, just a standard cost increase for another, in, in talks with the, the police, you know, wage. I'm sure there's some sort of wage increase or some sort of regular cost increase. You know, I would, I would roughly think there's a, a, a standard three or four percent on top of that. I, I was in, I was in favor of one, we can discuss this closer, when we were closer with the budget. I really like the idea of also a part-time. There's a lot of bang for your buck. It's less than half for thirty-five hours worth of, worth for, in comparison to a full-time. I would be okay for, for budgeting to, to lean towards the full-time and the part-time with this opportunity. I know it's a lot of money. Our budget's in pretty good shape this year. We got some ARPA money from, from this, from the state, so we do have, there, there would be no tax increase this year. But we gotta look at it long-term. We can't take two officers this year and then cancel out next year. So this is a long-term, a long-term commitment. Now, we're only, we're committed to, to Fleetwood year-to-year. We can cancel at any time on September first for the following, we just can't, I think it's September first, September thirtieth for the following year, not twenty-twenty-three, but twenty-twenty-four. So we're, we're contracted for that, but we, we've always had a good, a good partnership with Fleetwood. So if we're gonna make this commitment, I would want to think long-term and not just a short-term thing because they have legacy costs for pension and stuff like that also. And we've been pretty, pretty open, but some of the funding, I mean, you can see by the budget, we had LST taxes that are gonna be higher. We're already at budget here for our earning and tax, we, we're over our earning and tax already for the year September twelfth, so we probably, how, how long this earning and tax gonna take?
Months, months.
So we have, did we get it for September?
Not yet.
So we have three months of the E I, earning and tax. We're already at four-hundred, four-hundred-two-thousand, we're budgeted for four-hundred-thousand, so we're probably at a minimum, at a minimum fifty, a hundred-and-fifty, probably have a hundred-and-fifty more E I, E I T number than what we were thinking. We're at two-forty-six for LST tax, our budget is three-twenty-five, how often does that come in?
Same time.
Once a month?
Yeah, they come together.
So we're probably gonna be over budget. It's a lot of cost, a lot of that revenue comes from that. That creates some issues, that creates traffic issues, but they also contribute. So there is, I think, some budget, budgetary. Good news for the budget for us this year.
We use an ARPA clinic for police protection.
Yeah, the way that we, as I understand it, have documented our receipt of the ARPA money was for the, I forget what they called it, but you know, basically making up for lost revenue?
Yes.
Okay. And there is, it's kind of a standard amount that you can claim and our dollars are well within the limit for that, so we can claim all of the money we're getting as ARPA funds has lost revenue. And in that category, you can use the money for anything.
I know there were some approved.
I mean, you can't use it for pensions or a debt service, with the exception of pensions and debt service is pretty much whatever you want to spend.
At worst cases, three-quarters of the bill. Down the road.
I guess they got my period.
You can't take it back once we commit to it real easy, so. This'll come up in the budget, we don't have to decide necessarily tonight, but we can maybe give the, the Fleetwood police a feel for where we're at, because they got, they got a budget too now.
Yeah.
And bring it back to us. So do we give them, well, what do we have to do here, Chris? We have to vote on something, we have to.
Well, I'm sure they're looking for guidance from Fleetwood. And so a motion to indicate that you're willing to adopt a budget, that would include funding to cover the additional officer plus a part-time. A motion like that, I mean, that, that's not a contract, that's not a budget, but it is a commitment that you can make to them, that you would, you would look favorably upon a budget that includes an additional expense.
What are your guys' thoughts?
I agree, after the presentation, that's full and part-time is the way to go. And I think it was even less, and I thought that was a hundred-and-ten or fifteen with the full and part, and then the one, was it one-fifty for the two full-time?
I think it was one-fifty for the, the full was.
I don't think you can get two for, you know, one-fifty.
One-fifteen was.
Was it?
Yeah.
So I was trying to remember, I didn't have a copy of the.
So, so what happens between us and Fleetwood? We split the cost for these officers, so the total cost is probably three-hundred-thousand, but our, our share is, is one-fifty, roughly, yeah. So.
My feeling is, I'm surprised we'd have, had more of this conversation in the years past. I mean, I knew this was coming soon later. I think it's almost something we have to consider at this point.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. If we wanted to take you to have police coverage, we've got to have police coverage.
They're supposed to.
And they need tools to, to work with that. And they've always been transparent, they've always been responsive to our requests, there's always been some negotiating if we think something's a little higher, if we gotta push something down the road to maintain the budget. But the presentation was quite eye-opening for what they have to go through with the help they have. So I, I would make a motion that we would support a full-time and a part-time with roughly one-hundred-and-fifty thousand and for budgetary purposes, and then they come back with what they, what they're looking for. And we can be a little bit more finite with, when they submit us their budget.
We can look at where we are budget-wise.
Correct.
Second, that works.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Discuss changes to the solar farm plans.
Right. Now, I think that is a little broader than what was really the subject of discussions. I mean, we're at the point where the board has approved plans and we go through a discussion with the developer about improvements agreement that would secure their obligations based on what the plans were that were approved. And we had some pushback, I would say, on some of the terms, and I've had conversations with the attorney who had been representing them here, and I think we've come to an agreement on everything. Essentially, they are gonna do what we would normally do. You know, they, part of what he was asking about was if they could push off the time that they would have to provide the financial security until they would get building permits rather than provide the financial security at the time that the plan was recorded. And I said no to that. We want to maintain a consistent requirement for everybody that comes before the township and not make any exception on that. And it's really important that we are secure on those improvement obligations. What has happened since they initially requested is that, you know, their timeline has moved forward and they're close to being ready to start building. So their reluctance to put up that money has gone away. So they're willing to put up the money in order to have their plan released so that they can move to, you know, the building permit stage. I think the building permits are ready also, is my understanding.
They, they, they had some comments, Creft Co had comments back to them on Friday with some cleanup things, but for the most part, a little more information.
Coming together. Also, what we talked about a little bit was what the agreement would say about the, I forget what it's called, the, when they go out of service, to clean up the property.
Decommission.
Or the, right, exactly. So what our ordinance says is that they need to come up with a budget for that decommissioning expense and provide financial security for that within a year of the initiation of service. I had been trying to get them to do it upfront immediately and they pushed back and said, you know, we'd really like to do it at that one-year mark. I really don't have anything to stand on, you know, the ordinance speaks for itself. So I made that concession, which again, is just what the ordinance provides for. So we won't get that until a year from now. But I also wanted to make sure we had plenty of security for that, a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the estimated cost of removing the facilities, and they have agreed to provide that. That's more than what the ordinance requires. But it is on a net basis, meaning that they'll provide us a budget for the, the gross cleanup costs and they will provide to us a number for the, say, the recycling value of what is removed and then what they will have to secure in the form of a bond or letter of credit would be the net amount. That's also what the ordinance provides for, and I don't have a problem with that, but the amount is more than what the township would require as far as a percentage of that net number. So anyway, I think it's all worked out fine. I'm comfortable with where we're at with that. So I told Attorney Miller that I didn't think it was anything that he needed to come to the board to talk about. I think he and I have worked through it in a way that protects the interest of township.
He was the same attorney that was there from the get-go.
Yes, exactly. He represented the original developer and then have jumped on with the party that bought the project. Uh. So what we want to mention is he did give me a timeline for them to wanna push dirt. They have an E N S permit. I don't know if they have an N P D E S permit. I don't know. Do you have any knowledge of that, Scott?
I don't know. I think they're, I think all the permitting is finished. I believe so, I can't.
Now, they wanna, on the basis of that E N S permit and N P D E S permit, break ground on September twenty-one. I said, I would very much like them to have their plan recorded and have that financial security posted with the township before they break ground. But they do have the right to break ground on the basis of that E N S permit and N P D E S permit. So what I told him is that if they are not going to have to sign the improvements agreement with financial security delivered to us. So the plan could be recorded before they break ground. I want them to post an escrow for inspection costs. And I want them to notify Scott of their schedule, you know, if they intend to actually break ground. So he agreed to all of that. I'm hopeful that, you know, in a week and a half, now that he and I have come to an agreement about what the term should be. That they can get their signed agreement in here with financial security. But it's possible that they won't, you know, this is very bureaucratic. So if.
They might move this quick.
On the end of their their security specifics of the numbers and that, I think the the costs of what they had to do for the stormwater. Especially with the soil amendments was a little surprising, and even on their end, the engineers and everybody. Once they got those costs from the contractors, so.
Everything costs.
Everything else was very reasonable call compared to where the construction project, but those soil amendments, because there's so many of them. More than double their cost overall. So they're still trying to work through what will approve, but I I know they're working on it faster in the past.
Well, they're they're.
Couple days.
I mean, what what he told me is that, you know, they're initially, when they were saying they wanted to try to push off the financial security. Till the building permit stage, and they were still a little bit on the fence about the project. But he said they have now made their commitment to move forward with the project. So there's no longer, I guess, hesitation now whether that actually comes through or not. Time will tell, but I want Scott to be prepared if we need to put together. An inspection escrow agreement that you have a number in mind. And also, I want to make sure they don't actually go out there and do anything until they've notified you.
Yeah. Sure, they're gonna get very antsy as that time comes, but. We've gone through that before.
It'll be a week and a half off.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's that's the update. Good all of you. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Do you have any concerns about what I laid out?
I think that's reasonable. What, we talked about financial security for long-term, like they could decommission anywhere from twenty-five to forty years. What does that look like? Is that a letter of credit? Is that?
Well, that's.
What do we have to do to make?
I think it's gonna be a lot in all likelihood. I doubt that they're gonna use a letter of credit just because of the carrying cost for that. And these numbers under our ordinance and the agreement are required to be updated every five years. So we'll have to get that, you know, re-submission of their cost estimates and have Scott review it. Tell us whether or not it's acceptable or if it needs to be modified or not. So, you know, if that number goes up, they'll have to post a new financial security for the increased amount. And do that throughout the life of the project so that we don't get, you know, a problem of having not enough security. For the obligation to clean up the property.
I'm just wondering if we have to, something we have to check on every year, if it's a five-year thing, if the issue of bond, the bond's good for five years or if cancels will get notice.
They might.
I just want to know if the township's responsibility.
Yeah, well, the way we wrote the agreement, they say if they notify us before any expiration or termination of financial security. So that will be covered in that way. But, you know, we will only accept. Financial security that on its face says that it can't be terminated without prior notice contention. You know, that's, we've hit down that path before. We don't accept anything that could be terminated or expire without notice.
Okay. All right, do you need anything from us?
No, I just wanted you to be aware of all that.
All right. The website for the township.
The two options at the top between Wix and Go Daddy are both with templates that you choose to create the website, which a lot of townships are doing. Rather than having somebody like, you know, Corey or even the Town Web. That is basically giving them the information. They create everything. They don't go on a template. They create from scratch. So that's the difference between McCord and Town Web can do versus having templates and just having us go and create ourselves.
Yeah, basically, what you're paying us is the design. Your website isn't that complicated. Would you feel comfortable in creating it either?
Never done it before. Worked it out.
The, I mean, I heard a good idea, but the other one, did did, did you have anybody that is using one of these?
Wix is actually used by her first township. Diane is using that presently. Her secretary, her assistant that's over there actually put everything together and designed theirs, but that's what they're using.
Other side of the.
Yes.
The Town Web, they do it all, but it's quite expensive. It's all up.
It's pretty much the same. I think Corey was even a little bit more expensive than that.
Yeah, quite a bit more.
Yeah, almost twice as much.
Yeah. But we're not. We're not all that complicated.
Right.
For what we're looking to do here.
We don't accept payments or anything like that.
We're not doing commerce, e-commerce. So it's really not, I mean, it's a multiple, it's a couple pages, so much like that's it.
Right.
The key is to be able to update often and easy.
Right.
So we can do announcements. You know, that's that's the key, ease of use is what we have to.
Right.
Look at.
Okay. Another thing to think about, maybe I and Mark have wanted to approach it about it, maybe an electronic sign like they have in Fleetwood Park. Maybe put it out here or put it out in the circle, wherever you wanna put it, but electronic, you could almost put anything on there. Business meeting this day, you know, budget meeting this day. You can put all your information on there. They have happy birthdays. They go, they go through all kinds of stuff on that sign. That's a good way to to get what the word that you want out besides Facebook, because I'm not a, I'm not a web surfer. Neither is he. I have nothing to do with that. I'll never look at it. You got people, older people especially, that won't even look at that. But if they see a sign like that while they're driving, they might stop and read it. It's probably just a business meeting today. Might be a different way. That's what we do on our sign out out front at our fire company. Ours isn't electronic. We have the things that we gotta change all the time. But it's the same thing. We have something to announce, we put it up there, done drawing this date, call this number for tickets. It's just a way to get what your message out to the public without really. I mean, it's a little expensive. They're a little pricey, but in the long run.
I think three, eight, let's mark it for around two twenty-two.
Yeah, right, in circle.
We had the opportunity.
As long as somebody didn't run over it.
Listen, we had the opportunity to advertise Richmond Township when they built the circle. We were so unsure how it would work. We didn't want anything to do with it. That had we known, had we known that it was de-successful, not a bad idea, when it happened, there was no way.
I mean, the sign might be a good way if you were to do it for an alternative of what you're talking about, to get your, your thoughts instead and your wishes out there, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
I know Mark may want to said said something maybe about, you know, posting like their government on it or or their, I think they have a Trump retreat coming up that he just spoke to me about.
Yeah, I see.
Now, of course, sometimes even us could, you know, hey, can you?
I wonder if we have enough visibility, but we don't, we don't have much, what's our, we probably don't have it.
We don't have a lot of right of way.
Right of way up there.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, he didn't know exactly how much you have a sign out there, but.
Yeah, it's going, you have a whole lot.
Power out there. Yeah, my channel's always window. I'm already complaining.
No chance we'd get a complaint there either.
Yeah. Who who manages, you you have Facebook, the, uh, Volantown?
I mean, we have a Facebook, Brittany Brittany, so step on that. I have nothing to do with that.
Yeah. What about you? Who does the Fleetwood?
We, um, actually, I think right now, it's Officer Mark. Angela does that. Again, I I'm kinda like him.
All the groups.
There's a lot of people that do. There's probably people that live on it and share.
I I agree.
A lot of those. I I think I think a Richmond Township Facebook is a good one, but but it has to be monitored because we don't want all kinds of.
Right.
Comments. You know what I mean? They could, they could, just for information, and they could reach out to the township. I wouldn't wanna, but you could manage all that. And it wouldn't be that costly. If we just, we could have somebody that just would be a little tech savvy that could maybe fill in just contract bases, you know, I mean, they. Somebody from the township could just.
But I know some of these very simple websites, design systems. Once you have it set up, it's pretty simple.
Right.
And then, of course, you have to have your domain name registered. Yeah, registered. Something, I guess we have to do that because we're, everything's going away from the.
Right.
But. And it's another thing too, is something, if we have something in a two-year agreement, we don't like it, two-year, we can do something different. But I think we should do something.
Yeah.
Right. We have to work out.
Yep. So I'd be okay with this Wix.
Okay.
Just if, I mean, between the two, Go Daddy seems a little more corporate this Wix, especially if Herford, you know, the hand works here a little part-time. And gets some information for if they're satisfied, if you have someone.
Okay.
Someone that's doing it, but we gotta get our domain registered too.
Right.
So I don't know if they'll be with that.
Yes.
So, and and I would look into getting, if you know anything, if not, we gotta get someone that knows a little bit. I don't know anything about Facebook either. But I think a Facebook page to get messages out like like this police meeting. You know, we gotta get more visibility versus, I mean, a newsletter ultimately mailed to the residents would be would be awesome. That's that's very costly.
Maybe group does that, but like you said, I I would think that's pretty costly.
That's that's very costly. I think there's some better alternatives, at least to start to try.
Thirty-four hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any attempt to publicize your meeting minutes?
Yeah, I think the meeting minutes on the.
On the website.
Yeah, on the website.
Yeah.
Do you mean you have any issue with that?
No.
No, yeah.
I would put them on after approved.
Right. So that would be following it though.
Yes.
Like a month behind.
Yes.
What about agendas?
They should be on there before the meeting.
They're on every Friday, just when we.
So, yeah, so the agenda. So whatever's coming up in the township, people know.
Like I said, I I struggle to make these meetings. Next month I was here, I had no clue what was being discussed. Because I wasn't up to date.
Right.
If meeting minutes were posted and I could see them, because I work second shift.
Yeah.
As a taxpayer, a lot of times I can see that. That way I'm up to date. I understand a little bit more of what you guys are talking about.
That'd be great. So, yeah.
Okay.
So I make a motion, we go with Wix to make for three twenty-four for two years.
Oh, second.
All in favor? And if you can research somehow, or if you know, if we can think of something that would help us with Facebook, to get it set up.
Right.
We could post stuff without comments. You know what I mean? I don't wanna have monitoring that people comment, but to get it out there and they can always call if they have questions.
It's not.
Say it's coming for our maintenance.
Yeah, ask her. She would be pretty, at least a resource. Because I think we need to have a little bit more visibility.
You can almost reach out to Nate too.
Sure.
Nate.
Okay.
You got one of these younger.
Yeah, you gotta get somebody young. That's just, it's just.
Right.
A second nature. All right. Engineers report.
I think the big thing here was the invoice for the street work. Yeah, let's go on. Same. There's two other pages. The invoice that Jen had there was straight from H and K, and there's two copies there if you feel wanted. That would be, um, the first three pages are a change order and outlines. Each road a little bit better on, some stuff that had gone a little higher, some that went lower. For example, Adam Rose, that one went a little high, but they did that and went past, which I was talking to Sam about it, kinda get a better run in the, right in the end. No scene to top it off, but takes a little more when you fill in some of it.
It takes more material.
Yeah. But I haven't seen them since they've been done. I haven't seen them when they, during any of the rain events here, but I don't think there has been any. Concerns on that end of it. Basically, on the change order, again, that kinda tracks exactly what went high, low. There was roughly, I wanna say it was about eighty-five hundred in material that had gone higher than the contract price. Probably around six trucks overall in the total project. The price adjustment for the paving escalation, that was fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-six and change. That's just, everybody's getting a little down this year. There was really no air on that. So.
So if you take the escalation up there, we were eight thousand over budget.
And we need to, we, I mean, I, we all, I expected there was gonna be an escalation with diesel and asphalt last year. So this all looks okay. Chris, how do we handle the the genet drive? How do we get that out of, out of escrow?
What is that? Is that a cash escrow, a letter of credit?
I think it's cash.
Cash escrow?
I think it, yeah, it wasn't.
Okay, we just need to. Make a motion that we're going to use that money and modify it and follow the on our, I mean, have we ever issued and had a communication of default to them on that?
I'm not sure. I have not, but I don't know if there ever has been at all.
And that was private developer. That's that's all they developed for multiple years.
Yeah, I still think we need to do a notice process in order to validly claim that money. So that would be, you know, make a motion to send a letter to the developer claiming default and notifying him of our attempt to take the money out of the escrow. And then there's no starts within thirty days. Just take the money. But we need to do due process.
Okay, I just, just so there's a mechanism to get that money back.
As far as the closing it out with liquid fuels, it's just gonna fall in the other category as far as that end of it. Do you have anything on the streets, Rob?
Are you in one of paper, Robin?
Yeah, I thought about it really good.
Yeah, and I looked at everything they did. It actually looked really good.
Did it, did it, did it look for what I?
As far as paving slips and all that good stuff going through it, I mean, there was no changes. It was straight up and that, so. Project is mostly just material, sort of some of the patches on factory. A little bit they're repaired.
So that, just after nineteen hundred and thirty-six?
Yeah.
So I was just looking at what this for was.
I don't have to say.
I think about twenty thousand.
So that 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 would be good. You can actually pick the budget on that. get the budget on that.
Yeah, I think we, we have some.
Do you know if there's any documentation about a failed inspection or something like that?
I, I mean, right up till when we bid the project, Jared was pretty involved with it, so there may be something.
Because I think, again, you know, we need to follow process in order to legitimately claim that money. If there is a document, you know, an inspection report that shows that, now we need the inspection, that would be what I need.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think there, I think the initial inspection, when there's kind of the walkthrough, he had more information than I can just kind of random off the top of my head here, so I feel like there, there might be something already completed, but, yeah.
I don't even know how old the project is, it's prior to we being here.
Yeah.
That was twelve years ago, twelve, thirteen years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it was before your time.
Like really the road itself, other than just being old and just kind of losing oil at the surface that really held together, I mean, that's where we're able to save some money is, we had the leveling in there to try to uh, cover it up extra for you too, but.
So there was nineteen, that, that, what's left on there, uh?
We just got the bank statement today, twenty thousand, four seventy-one six.
Yeah, so what happens to the balance end, once this is complete, if everything else is checked off, does the rest go back to the number?
I'm sure all your expenses are.
All right, so then, in the end, the, the final payment due all said and done, thirty K through the invoice was four hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
And of that, twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, just yet?
I have a file, I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Just gotta look for that information here.
I don't think I have anything else pressing for tonight, I just real quick, the, uh, the memo of understanding with consideration, just to double check that.
Yeah, already done, yeah.
Okay. That was really the only thing I had.
All right, Mr. Solicitor report. All right, I should have, uh, report, Michelle prepares. Just, so we talk this through, this, uh, account number ten fifty-six, this is the first basic report. There was a thousand dollar payment received, uh, is that clear, is that?
There were some pams that I don't know.
All right, so it appears that a payment was made in pams for about a third of the outstanding amount, and that was only, I think, because township had initiated the election process of a sheriff's sale that has started, and, um, the sheriff will conduct that sale later in the month of September. In order to use that process to recover money, township has to be prepared to, uh, take the property that is levied upon by the sheriff, and if there is anyone who bids, for example, if the property owner bids on their own stuff, we need to participate in the sheriff's sale and bid enough to recover what we have as a judgment on that property, but not be a part of what the stuff is worth. And we need to have people out there, such as the road crew, to help transport anything that is acquired here. We went through this a number of years ago. But it has also come to my attention that there is a mortgage foreclosure action that is active on this property. And there was supposed to be a sheriff's sale at the end of last week, but I haven't gotten an update on whether or not that sale went forward or not. So what I would say is that if I get confirmation that the lender has taken the property through that sheriff's sale of real estate, then I would immediately stop on the sheriff's sale of personal property, because we will get paid.
We will.
Yes, we will get paid through the sheriff's sale of real estate. If for some reason, the real estate has not, the real estate sheriff's sale had not been completed, then we still have the option to move forward on the personal property if you want to. But, uh, Michelle indicated to me that what the sheriff found at the property was not very promising as far as a basis to collect what's owed to the township.
So what I, in my paper shuffling, I cannot find that paper here, what's, what's the, I'm sorry, Michelle called us around it.
So, we're still owed about two thousand remaining, assuming that the thousand dollars I want to pay is cleared. So.
The twenty-nine hundred minus a thousand then?
Correct, correct. So, I guess the question is, do you really wanna go through the sheriff's sale while there is a mortgage foreclosure action pending? And the report from the sheriff about what he has levered upon is not very promising as far as, you know, getting anything valuable from it. I guess I'm concerned about the burden on the road crew and losing a half a day screwing around with this. That has value too.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say we wait until after, if we see if there is a sheriff's sale of the property, confirm that. And then confirm that and then go for it. All right, so, uh, do you want me to ask the sheriff to postpone this? Or do you want me to just find out what happened with the sheriff's sale, and if the sheriff's sale didn't happen, that we could go forward? We have a couple of different options.
Well, with the facts being present, sheriff's sale is never something that we wanna do, it's always a tool that the net people are paying, it's always been successful in the past. If they don't have enough money, if this is just gonna, you know, I, I don't like to put the road crew through this, I don't like to put them in that position. I would if we had to, but I don't, especially if we're not gonna collect, I think we should just postpone it, I don't wanna waste everybody's time. We do have a lien on the property, and maybe just postpone it for now, would be my, my idea.
All right, 'cause like I said, it'll be a lot less painful to just get it through the mortgage foreclosure rather than to do the personal. That's a solution, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put off the personal property sheriff's sale, see what happens with the mortgage foreclosure, and I'll give you an update next month.
That sounds good.
Then, um, I wanted you to be aware, you know, this Wells Fargo one, account eleven seventy-eight, that keeps growing, they're not paying anything, we oughta keep our liens up to date, get on them. So, if it's okay with you, I will update our liens so that, you know, they will eventually resell that property, we wanna just make sure that we get everything that's owed to us at that time.
Correct.
All right, we still have this situation with the account number twenty-eleven, where, um, you know, they paid the delinquency, but they didn't pay the process costs, and we're still trying to get that, so, uh, that is noted in our report. And then, um, this is a question with account twenty fifty-four as to whether or not, um, they have paid the current quarter or not.
Yes, they did.
They did.
Yes, yeah, everything's fine.
All right, so we're good on that one. Those are the action items, or the discussion items that I had noted for this month. You know, we do have a couple that are creeping up there that we may eventually need to take some action on, but the ones that we talked about are the hot ones for the moment. All right, do you have any questions about any of that?
Nope.
All right, so we will postpone the personal property sheriff's sale for the one, we will file new, or updated liens on the other. And, um, we'll see what happens, go next one. Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right, thank you. The next item is, uh, if you recall, there was a question made by a resident about whether or not the township had responsibility to maintain Hewitt Avenue, you remember that discussion? And the report we got from the road master was that this was a private street, was never maintained by the township. But then the resident who was here brought up the fact that there were sewer lines in that street, and that caused me some heartburn knowing that the township had some involvement with that street, and I wanted some clarification about what the status was. So I undertook some research, I initially went through the files that I got from the former solicitor, and I reported to you what I found, which didn't answer the question, but then we dug into the recorder of deeds records, and did find an answer to the question. And it appears that the township did condemn right away for the, uh, sewer lines and for a pump station in those paper streets. I'm not aware of whether any damages were ever collected, because the condemnedee was the estate of folks who died a hundred years ago, who were still the record owners of the property in question. But, in my opinion, there was a sufficient legal process undertaken by the township to acquire the right to install the sewer facilities in Hewitt Avenue, and also there was an intersecting private street.
Barge.
Barge, right. So, uh, there is a clear legal record of the acquisition of the right away. And that answers the question about how it is that we have sewer facilities in those streets. So I think the answer is now clear to the resident that the first answer was correct, that they are private streets. The process undertaken by the township was effectively an acknowledgement that it was private property. We would, the township would have never had a reason to condemn right away if it was already a public street. So, all the actions the township has taken are consistent in that those streets are private. So, now that I've reported this to the township, and I also sent an email to each of you, and to Jen, with the supporting documents, I think some kind of communication should go to the resident who was here asking about this. And I don't know if you want to ask them from me, or if you want Jen to pass on the information that I had provided in email, it's up to you.
I think it should. To be honest with you.
Okay, so do you have the name, or could you get the name, the contact information? So Jen provides me the name and the address, I'll send a letter. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, she's on, you have it, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'll send a letter.
The document, it actually, you can't even, you wanna have to list it this.
Right, it's the file that is better, it would be easier, but anyway, I'm relieved that we got the answer that we needed was the right answer, right answer. Okay. Any questions about that?
Nope.
All right, next item is pension advisor, if you recall, we went through an advertising process and received a proposal that meets the requirements of the solicitation that we sent out. So you are now in a position where you can't accept that proposal if you are inclined to do so. And this is from, uh, Gerard, uh, which is the entity that we have had some pre-bid conversations with, they were the only entity that submitted a proposal, and this is for investment advisor services for the township pension. The fees are the same as what we had discussed with them. It's, they would be using Nationwide as the investment vehicle, uh, and, uh, there's a fee of one point one-three percent that Nationwide takes for custody and record keeping related to the administration of the pension. And then there's a point five percent fee for the investment advisory services. So it's a total of one point six-three percent that is taken out of the earnings of the pension. And those are the total fees, then there's, um, an additional act two oh five report that is required to be submitted to the state, that's a, um, a five hundred dollar fee. I believe that's an annual fee, uh, and then back to that one point six-three percent. There's a note here about a two thousand dollar, uh, annual hard dollar fee. I believe that must be in addition to that percentage. Have you studied these?
I have not.
You have not, okay, so I'm, um, assuming, because I can't see anything here that says otherwise, that that would be an additional fee. In any event, uh, when you look at what we're paying now for these same services, and considering what our working experience has been with the current service providers, uh, I think that we can reasonably have a much higher expectation of getting services that the township and the employees of the township deserve. And I don't think these fees will exceed what we're already paying for these same services.
Yeah, well, we had pre, pre-discussions, seemed to be like very similar fees, but a much better expectation of service to the employees and also the two oh five report, just the whole management of the account has not been done very well. So it's a very slow, very slow response.
And it's so easy to get the police to do these deals.
Yeah, so, I, uh, I, I make the motion to go with this bid. I'll second, all in favor?
All right. Do you wanna get back to the gentleman?
Sure.
He will, uh, the contact for this is a guy named Ron Bitner.
Yes, I think I know his business partner office.
So, uh, Jen should notify Ron that township is accepting the proposal, and then he will submit some contact documents that will have to be reviewed and approved by the board something, but this is the first step. I think that's it for me, unless there's something else that you have.
I do not have anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see anything from that clip. Roadmaster's report.
Really don't have too much, I've pretty much covered everything with the road work. The only thing that I really have is, in the previous two meetings, we talked about selling the five fifty again. I was just wondering what, what's all the one, had the reserve price?
What was it before?
I would say it was fifteen thousand.
And what do we, what was the credit?
Eighteen twelve.
I would say we keep it at fifteen and then we can always accept less. Is now the time we wanna post it or we wanna wait a month?
I think we take a little bit, taking action now. This one over, get fifteen.
Forty, forty. I mean, that's just the floor.
Okay.
I was thinking fourteen. Yeah, I was like, actually fourteen, sorry.
Please.
We have to look back to and see what, I don't remember offhand either right now.
Fourteen's okay. I mean, if it, we can always, if it goes less, we can decide if it goes more, then we're good.
Then we're closing the doors for us.
Yeah. Fourteen.
That's pretty much all I have.
How long do you think it'll be out of the closing work?
Should be done this week, other than cleanup work. Doctor will see you in straw.
Do you think Alan will be out there at the end of the week?
I would say so.
Cause they're still home for that other Friday.
That's good. Would've been better with the drought.
Yeah. Yeah, we missed the boat on that one. Now it doesn't stop raining.
So, okay, secretary's report.
General Farm, we have check numbers one oh five twenty eight to one oh six twenty two including EFTs for three hundred three thousand twenty seven dollars and thirty eight cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, check number twenty one fifteen for one thousand four hundred fifty eight dollars and forty cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Life fund, check number twenty one fifty one for six hundred sixty three dollars and sixty eight cents.
Make a motion to prepare. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer fund, check numbers twenty nine ninety three to three thousand five including EFTs for forty seven thousand six hundred fifty three dollars and sixty eight cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, check number twenty one fifty three for seven hundred seventy nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Virginville Fire Escrow, check numbers twenty one fifty two and twenty one fifty three for sixty eight thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars and ninety two cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you all got the email on the medical benefits.
We did.
Just had a summary as to what the employees contribute and the township pays.
I was pleasantly surprised at that rule.
Mm-hmm.
It's like people said.
Yeah, but younger, healthier employee appropriate.
The only thing I don't like is the age base. The older you get, the more you pay.
But the benefit is you're getting older. To be all terms, it's not too good. I, I, I would make a motion and we just renewed the same, same plan.
Okay.
Same.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the twenty twenty three non-uniform pension plan, the NMR, this is our pension here.
That looks great.
Is there any questions?
Nope.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the, the work that was done so far, it doesn't run with all the the pipes, the catch basins and the excavating that we had to do. We're understanding that we're taking that money out of the ARPA fund and transferring it to the general fund to pay for those bills since we don't actually have a checking account in the ARPA fund. This is just for auditing purposes, making sure that they know that this is where the money went to and we're going at that, at it that way. The total amount for the actual work so far was eight thousand nine hundred eighty four dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, did that other deposit, I'm all for it.
Yes, it did.
Perfect. Anything else?
No, that is it.
Um, I only have one follow-up. We had a resident come and complain about Service Electric not running in parts of the township because they didn't have any internet. Um, we asked Michelle to look into it. Michelle got in touch with Service Electric. Sam spearheaded the Service Electric and the lines are running for the resident.
Wow.
Which is just amazing. Amazing. They ran the lines, then he just took a little push.
Yeah, Michelle was real help.
Yeah.
She found one first.
Yep, that's usually what it takes.
Wish it helps quicker, I mean, I build more. I had a tree on up their wires yesterday and they wouldn't come out and do it.
Yes. I hope it's not a surprise. Hey. Very happy with the results of being successful, we didn't get it.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was a win that I wasn't, I was hoping, you know, we talked about it when we renewed the contract, but then it sort of fell, fell by the weak side.
Did they only get one additional house or?
No.
No, they're, they're gonna do everybody on that road. They're actually building a new fireback one out there. I think the kind of, the wheels were kind of in motion. We just accelerated the process. Because, you know, they were working in different areas. Five percent. I talked to the guy that was actually managing that whole area out there. He said, hey, we should have service out there in the next thirty to sixty days. And.
Wonderful. But he was right, they ran the lines already. So, is there any other areas there, like behind Weaver's there, there's a couple houses, do you know where they're gonna expand?
Um, there were some, but they've all been, to my knowledge. I'm sure there's a couple really rural locations. But if anything comes up, I mean, they, the thing you gotta remember, they're getting funding to do this. So, this isn't, there's a big push now to give everybody a galaxy internet service. So, and there's money out there to do it. So, there's incentive for them to do that because they're getting paid for every outcome. So, now's the time. If there's anybody in the township that, you know, wants to get internet that doesn't happen, now's the time.
There was two businesses there, I, I don't even know how you survive in business without internet.
It is. Almost undoable.
Yeah, that's all I have, I just want to to mention a win, and that's a win. So, any other public participation from the floor?
Ask me one question. But maybe I should ask it, maybe a gentleman gave his report here. When you mow the sides of the road, okay, when the grass is high. What is that distance from the, I'm assuming it's the edge of the cow back? Is, is there a required distance that you're mowing?
I think probably right away is the center line. How far are you from the center line?
Sixteen and a half feet.
Yeah, it's our right of way. So, from the center line, sixteen and a half feet is our right of way to mow.
About two to three years ago, these were trimming some branches, a galleon road where we live, which turned out to be probably this big in diameter, or like locks, I guess.
Yeah, the street, I know where you mean.
Yeah. So, our driveway is right there. And the reason I question is, what is the, the distance? To me, it looks yay wide. I might hope I obviously, the distance from the center of the room is sixteen feet. But when you go to pull out of the driveway, you're almost getting whacked. And it's not like this happened once or twice. This is, without exaggeration, fifty times in a year. So, a little of the history and what happened here is you guys were cutting these branches for locks. The farm beside us said they were gonna take the wood. Although if you reported that group, yeah. Well, they never took the wood. So, now created a, an unsafe pulling out of the driveway. You're misses fifty times roughly a year.
Is it just the walls that are in the way?
Yeah. I, I mow, I mow along there and, you know, you can't mow beyond the, again, your brother was nice enough to push it back as far as he could get on this, this component, but we can't still pull it out of our driveway. Maybe it's within the sixteen feet that you speak of. Maybe it's beyond that and, and you're not obligated in any way to make this right or maybe all.
I'm not sure about the obligation, but I could check with the farmer to see if he could push it back.
That's what was supposed to happen, he was gonna take the wood, but he never took it.
It's, it's the one right, it, it's the one towards Goodstown. I assume you're the house right at the woods.
Yep. Where the, where the last house.
Yeah, I know the farmer there very, very well. I'll reach out to them.
I appreciate that.
See when they have their liver back, they can just push back.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I got one, Brian, just sorry, I forgot that.
Listen, your time.
I know.
You're under.
It's a little hesitant to say it, to say it. Just so you're aware, our office has been working on, and I think resubmitting this week for the MS four permit waiver. Township had qualified for that before and that deadline was up for this year. So, those permits and waivers of permits have been submitted, so for filing that paperwork, we've been in contact with the D P. Just, they had some forms updated even just within the past month, so making sure we get the right ones before we send it in.
Perfect. What's the deadline, the end of the year?
I, I think the deadline was sometime last month, but they also updated their paperwork. So, they're allowing, their deadlines for anything MS four have been so loose. Some, some municipalities for the past four years haven't even had their permits yet issued, so they're loose on that end. But we're in direct contact with the one that we're submitting too. Have that and another one that, another municipality with the waivers, but I think, I think we are submitting that this week. We're just kinda, to be honest, haven't carried one look over to just so he doesn't come up with something that may have been in there before, but there really has been no changes from what they're looking at in the areas for that MS four, so just a quick update, so you guys were aware that paperwork's going in, we expect it to come back the same, but.
Appreciate it.
Just an update.
Perfect. Anything else? Oh, I'm making motion to a juror.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll squeeze that in where it's supposed to be next one.
I just like the.
Chris was doing his report. That's when it hit me, you know, where's the best place?
You're always good.
I skipped, skipped over the miscellaneous section.
You're always, you're always a good guy. That's Gary Hill.
He's, he's good when I see him.
Why not?
Good. It is, I think his camping's slowing down, but now ten states ramping up, so there's a trade-off on when, when and why he's not around, but he's, he's usually in there Mondays, Tuesdays. Still staying busy, so.
We appreciate you throwing this.
Yeah. Appreciate that. It's always nice having Gary around and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, he has history, so.
Oh, it's, yeah.
This is a real championship business.
Right. Yes. That he was mowing and he wanted to be part of his, yes.
So, I did a little bit of research whether or not the land behind here had any rights to this. He answered, so these, these properties behind here don't have any rights to these contracts discussed. So, that means that.
No, we've been, yeah. Well, Burke was one.
Labor.
Well, he would have to do a quiet type election. I mean, if he's mowed up and has had possession of them or a length of time, he would have the right to do a quiet type election. He needs an arrow lawyer.
Gotcha, go ahead, do that, okay.
This one's.
Yeah, I think that, right, your mind off one road.
This is Brett, he's had a career, I think this is his, he's familiar with it.
Yes, yeah. Can you talk for a while, I'm gonna get with it tonight.
If he's, I don't know if he's, if he's, he's gonna leave there, see what's up.
Figured it first.
Sorry.
That's alright.
See, I mean. So, you're, you're kind of big.
I told you.
And then.
They're gonna get, you can get.
But you have more to that. We found all of them, so they're, they're, I think they have some personal second.
And then he has two other properties that are working.
So, the.
They have some, first one of the inception.
What's that view? You said a company driveway, you should have that part there. Hopefully, you're gonna have a concrete driveway. And those are, which are good part. The first, they're lying, their lights are some.
Occupied.
Concrete driveway. But you have better ground, well, concrete driveway.
For hours, like eight, nine thousand dollars.
Did you know it's there or are you getting out? I don't know, it's like, it's a fault.
And then the other ones. And that thing. And then the house side. It was empty and in poor condition. And that's a thing with sewer, but.
So, I followed it.
And I see.
He goes to the driveway and he said he goes to have, well, his little sewer thing.
Isn't it, isn't it?
Drive it, somebody's face, he said.
They have, not personally, they have.
But it's on the, do you want to get the drive?
They're trying to sell her, they're holding the.
At least, we have more. Oh, maybe you just work around it? Yeah.
But the first. That needs to be cleaned.
Ground covered.
It should have.
So, they put it over, the new pipe one, the, they just. They're putting it. Get that piece secured. And that's, has like a full cover up.
The wall still, it's out.
Oh, we have, yeah.
Yeah, as long as they make grades, it's hard.
You want to reach out there, you wanna reach out to him?
I think you're.
Okay. That's about it. Safe and secure.
I guess. On our end.
Because there's no leadership over there.
It is. My, my, you guys always have a leader more of this.
As I said, yeah. I said, God, they did some arms out of war in front of me.
Oh, yeah.
So, you want me to reach out?
Did you?
What are you doing with that?
Jerry, we got this utility.
Yeah. So, what are you doing there? Yeah, they shut that out there, got it.
I think the first thing would be on the lien, I saw it was a sewer on all these, from the township there.
For sure.
Years ago. Just the amount of things that they knew they could use.
Record.
The sewer.
Oh, yeah. Some outside sources.
They use it for everything they need plus up just.